All right, welcome. Come on, get off my screen, there we go. This is the Springfield Planning Board Meeting of Wednesday, August 18th. We are meeting via Zoom. Welcome, everyone. If everyone would mute except for the Planning Board members, that would be appreciated. Phil, if you would do roll call.
Mr. Cunningham. I think you're.
Yeah, I'm mute.
Here. Mr. Minio.
Here.
Daniele.
Here.
It's Warren.
Here.
Steve Filippo.
Here.
Mr. Florian.
Here.
Miss McQuade is absent, Miss Choi is absent, but we do have a corner.
Okay. And we have minutes to accept. So we have minutes for May 19th, June 2nd, June 16th, and July 14th. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of May 19th, June 2nd, June, what is that, 16th? July 14th of 2021.
Thank you. Thank you. Phil, do you need to do roll call?
If I could, voting in favor of the minutes, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Daniele?
Yes.
It's Warren?
Yes.
Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
And Miss McQuade and Miss Choi are absent. Just.
Phil?
Yeah?
Do you need me to come by and sign all these minutes we've been voting on?
Yeah, I think at some point I'll let Kathy get a hold of you to commit it.
Okay, thanks.
And just Gloria, just before we start the hearing again, I just want to give a reminder to everybody. Due to the Zoom procedures that are in place at the moment, and I'm not sure Zoom is ending anytime soon, but because of the Zoom meetings and the general public not being able to directly participate, all items tonight will be heard by the Planning Board and presented. Questions can be asked at that time. But the item will not be voted on. The item will be continued until the September 1st hearing. It is continued to allow the general public to view the meeting. The meeting will be posted on YouTube. Yeah, Focus Springfield, and I think they have an YouTube page, which will allow the general public to view the meeting, and then at that point they can comment. And any and all comments received will be read into the record on the September 4th, excuse me, September 1st meeting. And at that point, the item that are on tonight's agenda will be voted on. So on that note.
Thank you. If you would hear, if you would present the first petition in all alcohol, location 555 Worthington Street.
Well, that's the first item, all alcoholic, new 555 Worthington Street, Batista Rose Entertainment LLC.
That's me.
Okay, would you introduce yourself and your, and state your address, please?
Hi, my name is Kristen Fiori, and my address is 73 Price Street, Springfield, Mass. 01104.
And if you would tell us a little bit about your project.
So I sent Phil over, I'm not sure if he got it, about 20 minutes ago, a presentation. Did you get that in your email?
I did. I can, did you want me to put it up?
Um, yeah, that's easier. I feel like that covers mostly everything that we're gonna probably go over.
All right, let me, let me attempt to do this here.
Thank you.
Phil, did you just get it? Have you looked at it?
I haven't.
Yeah, so basically that is the old Lito's. So that's what, that's what we're gonna be opening.
Did that come up?
Yes.
Yeah. So basically, you know, I'm trying to bring that neighborhood alive again. So the goal is to create a vibrant and a safe environment for patrons to enjoy creative dishes and specialty drinks in a modern atmosphere. It also will be a space available for rent for special events like baby showers, birthdays, political events, holiday parties, et cetera. Our market is gonna be 25 and up. So as far, as far as the space for rent, I do already have holiday parties from the new, the new North Citizens Council, so they are interested in having their holiday party if all goes well. The operation hours are going to be Wednesday through Friday, 5:00 PM to 1:30 AM, and Saturdays and Sundays, 12:00 PM to 1:30 AM. Of course, that's subject to change. Perhaps it'll be super busy and we'll be open earlier and add in Mondays and Tuesdays as well down the line, but for now, I think that's a pretty solid start. The rental space will also be available in a separate room from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM or as needed. Kitchen will still be open to the public during private events. There are two main entry and exit points. Both will be monitored by security plus an emergency exit in the main area. And the plan is to hire about 20 employees, possibly more if needed, including chefs, kitchen staff, servers, security, and all servers will obviously be tip certified. So far, does anybody have any questions, or should I just keep reading through?
Keep reading, please.
Okay. So for security, there will be multiple cameras installed, both interior and exterior of the restaurant, which will be activated and in use during any and all business activity. So that will always be monitored. During peak hours, which I'm guessing are gonna be 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM, there will be professionally trained security team, about five to six individuals to verify identification, perform proper bodily searches, and maintain a controlled crowd. The security will also be present at all entry and exit points, keeping the traffic flowing and avoid blocking any exits or hallways. They will also be searching patrons upon entry to enforce the zero tolerance policy for narcotics or weapons in the restaurant. So security is definitely a very big thing. I want to make sure that everyone feels safe, everybody is safe, and everybody has a good time. So this is kind of continued on the security. So on top of the two or three that'll be at the doors and exit points, two, three to four security members will also be roaming throughout, maintaining order over patrons and security presence in the bathroom corridors, monitoring bartenders for over-serving and compliance of all mask laws and regulations. Security will prevent any activity that would interfere with the quiet enjoyment of nearby property owners or businesses. So we want to make sure we're not a nuisance as well. And then at closing time, which is gonna be around 1:30 AM, security presence will be outside, ensuring the parking lot is cleared promptly, so no one is hanging around. Everyone kind of gets in their cars and goes home safely without any issues or, you know, any being noisy or anything like that. And if necessary, we will hire police detail. I've already looked into that. They said it might not be necessary, but you know, they'll definitely be there for having any big events. Combined with the security team, so it'll be two police detail on top of the six security members. And we will do nightly debrief with the security and police detail to ensure proficiency and see what worked well, if anything didn't work well, and what we can do to better, if anything, for the next day. As far as the menu, it's going to be an American expired tapas and small plates menu with some southern flair. There'll be appetizers, small plates, as well as dinner specials and seasonal favorites, ranging from fried chicken and mac and cheese to pot roast and mozzarella sticks. There's also going to be brunch specials. For now, it's going to be just on the weekends from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM. And then I also want to bring in local guest chefs. So basically, I know a lot of people have been working from home since COVID. So I kind of, you know, they've been making food at home, doing catering, small events and stuff. I want to bring them in as well to kind of get the community involved and, you know, give them some, you know, give them a chance to kind of showcase everything that they have going on as well, some exposure, as well as bring different flavors to rosé. This is a quick little slide on me. So my name is Kristen Fiori. Like I said, I was born in Springfield, and I also reside in Springfield currently. I have over 10 years of experience working in restaurants and lounges from a lot of places in Springfield, New York, Rhode Island, all around the area. I've always dreamed of owning or operating a vibrant, diverse entertainment, a vibrant and diverse restaurant or lounge. So basically, this is something that I've kind of been saving forever for and super excited that now I have the chance to do it, and I really just can't wait to provide a superior, safe, and fun venue and bring downtown Springfield something that it's been, that I feel like it's been missing. So these are kind of just pictures of samples. Some of those are things that I have personally made, and some of those are things that I just found online, just for an example. And then this is an example of the cocktails. So, you know, frozen drinks, pina coladas and pineapple. I do that often. Margarita towers, you know, things like that. Some fun mimosas with popsicle sticks, some fun things, you know, just fun things that I feel like we don't have anywhere around here on the menu. And those are just, you know, if you wanted to have a birthday party, baby shower, holiday party, work party, we're available. And then I wanted to kind of give you guys a look. It's not finished with construction yet, but this is the look kind of that I'm going for. So the floors are gonna be similar to the first slide with marble type. Those are epoxy floors. And then if you've ever been to Lito's, I know it's definitely a staple in the city. They had in the banquet hall, they had like cobblestone walls, so I'm gonna keep the walls as is to kind of, you know, give some tribute to Lito's, and I'm just gonna whitewash them. So it'll look kind of similar to the first picture. And then we'll have some hanging lights and stuff, similar to the second picture. I think we'll give like a cool look.
All right, thank you. Do any of the board members have any questions?
Do you own the building?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
It's Rosemary. It doesn't sound like any restaurant that I go to. I mean, I don't worry about being searched or people bringing guns in or narcotics. It sounds more like a bar, and especially where you're going for 25 years old plus. I would think a restaurant, you'd want people that could spend the money eating the food. I'm just, it's not coming across as a restaurant. It's coming across as sort of more of a bar than a restaurant. I also would like to know more about, if you have any partners with this, who else is involved? What exactly is your 10 years of experience?
Yeah, so it's going to be like a restaurant lounge. So there is a bar. There's two bars that are the same bar you had to serve people and/or cater to the events. You know, people are having private parties. There's two separate bars. Also, the search will happen during peak hours, so on, you know, nights and weekends, just in case. It's kind of, you know, just to ensure everyone's safety. A lot of people are kind of, the stigma around downtown Springfield that they're scared to come because it's violent, you know, or a lot of crime. So I'm trying to prevent that, just make sure everybody is safe, everybody feels safe. You know, and just bring, like I said, I really just want like a fun vibe for people to come and enjoy themselves.
I guess I have concerns that if you feel your clientele are gonna need to be searched for guns and narcotics and stuff, I'm wondering who you think your clientele is gonna be. I'm not gonna go to a restaurant that I'm gonna have to be searched at, you know, because it's, it's, I go to restaurants to eat. So I have some concerns.
Yeah, I didn't say I think my clientele is gonna bring guns or narcotics. I think that a lot of spots in Springfield, you are searched when you go, so I just want to keep that same thing. Like I said, it'll be after 9:00 PM, you know, nights and weekends, just to make sure everybody is safe. It's not that I think the crowd is gonna be violent or anything like that. Like I said, I want people to come and feel safe. I want people to go back into downtown. A lot of people are scared. Downtown does have a stigma, so I just want to make sure everybody's safe. That's my number one priority.
And what about your experience? What exactly have you done for 10 years?
So I've been working in many different positions, you know, from bartending, promoting, event coordinating, you know, bar staff, things like that. As far as since I turned 18, I've been doing those types of things, and I've been to many places and seen many different things, and I feel like, you know, hotspots like Boston or Miami or New York have a lot of, have a lot of venues that I'm trying to bring here. I'm trying to bring, you know, where you walk in and it's a different vibe than everything else we have downtown. Also, my father has owned a couple of bars. My cousin Jimmy Fiori has owned a couple of bars. So a lot of people in my family have owned bars, restaurants, lounges, a lot of property in Springfield, and I have a lot of support from them as well. You know, so I'm just, I'm just trying to, like I said, I want to bring something new and fun, diverse, and vibrant to downtown, because I feel like we've been lacking that, and that building has been empty for a very long time, and I think it's time to get it alive again.
What have you managed? I mean, how big an operation have you managed? I don't mean acting as a bar, you know, working in a bar and stuff. What type of, what type of places have you actually been fully responsible for and managed?
So as far as that, I haven't been solely responsible, but I do plan to hire people that have had multiple years' experience and that will excel in the role. I'm actually planning a job fair with Mass Hire, so we're coordinating something soon so that we can, you know, find the right candidates. I've done a couple of, I've collected a couple of resumes, actually, just, you know, doing some sharing on social media and Indeed and things like that, looking to find the right candidates that I think, you know, will be able to excel and, you know, guarantee the success of this.
Leo, you had a question?
I was just gonna follow up from what Rosemary said. It really clearly sounds like, the security plan sounds very detailed, you know, and impressive. But it seems like, again, those are the types of things that you would see going into a bar. And, you know, like you said, to be searched to go into a restaurant, if you just wanted to go someplace to eat, I don't know how long that's gonna go over. I mean, if it was gonna be basically a bar, then come out and say, you know, I got this idea. I'd like to open up a bar, nightclub, or whatever. Because the food doesn't seem to be a big priority. You know, you said you're gonna bring in special chefs and stuff, but and the menu that we had, you know, mozzarella sticks and chicken wings and stuff like that. It seems like that's sort of secondary.
Yeah, the menu that I sent you was like two months old, and it was just the appetizer menu. So I do have other, like I put in the slideshow, you know, I plan to have seasonal things, like when winter comes, I really like to do things like pot roast, meatloaf, you know, heavy meals, fun meals, stuff like that, that, you know, you eat when it's colder out.
Are you a chef, Kristen? Are you a chef?
I'm not. I wouldn't say a professional chef, but I am a self-taught chef. I cook almost every day. I try different dishes and things like that, cook for family and friends.
But you're not a professional, okay?
No, no. But I also want to do something, like I said, I want to be really diverse, so I'm thinking Wednesdays during like, maybe like 12 to 3:00 or 12 to 4:00, 5 o'clock, I want to do something for seniors, so I want to do like a lunch or early dinner for them, and then set up like some type of bingo or activities for seniors as well, because there's nothing really going on for seniors either in the area. So like I said, I really wanted to be diverse during the day for seniors, you know, there wouldn't be any searching or anything like that. The searching is really just for nighttime. So I would say during the day, it's going to be restaurant, and the slash lounge would be the nighttime. And the food will be served all night.
I got a question. I just had a question. You know, like all these bars that stay open until 2:00 in the morning. I, me, I hate that. I like places that close at midnight. That way they could, the people, the families could go home and tuck in their younger kids and stuff like that. More family, but if you're out until 2:00 in the morning, you get home around 3:00 o'clock, you know, you've had a few extra. And it's, it's not the right thing to do. I highly recommend throughout the city, the world, every bar in the country, every restaurant in the country should close at midnight. Thank you.
Thank you, Rico. Go ahead.
I think it's definitely a great suggestion, but I think that, you know, now it's the younger generation, they work until maybe 11 o'clock at night, and if they want to go out and, you know, get something to eat or have a drink after a long shift, I think they should be, you know, able to do that as well. I used to work 3:00 to 11:00. The shift is really long, and if it's, you know, really tiring, everyone does have a different lifestyle, so it might be different than yours, Rico.
I understand, but you have a drink at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning. You're driving home kind of funny. And there's all, and nobody's thinking about their family at home, and these kids grow up crazy because there's no mom and dad at home. Thank you.
Well, there will be food served. Make sure that people aren't driving home drunk, and last call will be at 1:00. So with the last call at 1:00, you know, procedure is in place to make sure nobody's overpouring, over-serving. And then with the food served up until 1:00, I think that will be good too. You know, if you have a drink, it's good to eat something, get in your stomach for the ride home.
Chris, I, I was gonna say, I know the recommendation was till 12. Would you accept that if we, if we ended up approving it? What is your feeling about midnight?
Um, I feel like it's not really fair. Every, every other place in the area, the ale house is right across the street. They're open until 2:00. Yeah, they have food as well. They're right across the street. I feel like all the competition in the area is open until 2:00. And I feel like if, you know, you are granting me until 2:00, everybody will be out of the building by 1:30. Like I said, the security will follow everyone outside to make sure there's no problems. Everyone gets home safe. Not loud or anything like that, causing a scene. And I would like to try that with a probationary period, so, you know, the first six months or a year, you guys come in and check it out. If there's any issues, then we can review the closing time.
I think, I think going the other way makes more sense, but, okay. How many, what is your occupancy for the building?
The occupancy is between, I have to get it inspected, but it's about 250, 300 people.
Is that including the rental space?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the whole entire building.
The entire building, okay. I have to piggyback on some of the concerns that the board members have raised, Kristen. It's, it just doesn't read as a restaurant. And I think if you can, because this meeting, we will not be voting on it. If you could come back and provide Phil ahead of time a menu that we could see, because a restaurant would provide a menu. It's, you know, saying, well, I'd like to do this, I'd like to do that. That isn't concrete enough for us. I appreciate your ideas, but we like to see everything listed out. You know, and I know that in the letter from the Armory Quadrangle, you had mentioned that at some times you were gonna close the restaurant for a special event. Is that still a possibility?
No, so that's why I tried to make this PowerPoint more clear. There's a way to close off the room. So if you guys do remember Lito's, like I said, it's in the old banquet space with the cobblestone walls. So you're able to close those off. So we're able to have still the lounge area closed off, and then a separate area for any type of parties. And like I said, they'll have their own bar for sodas and drinks, and then there's another one available for the regular patrons as well.
Okay. Also, please talk about this DJ that's listed from the Quadrangle. Are you going to have a DJ there?
Yes, I am. I have an entertainment permit license, you know, that I paid for, so I want to be able to exercise that right and have entertainment as well for people to enjoy. I know they expressed concerns about noise, and to be honest, I feel like they had a lot of bias because they brought up a previous business in the area, the Malecone, that was a restaurant and bar. And I have no affiliation with them, but they did bring them up multiple times, and I feel like it was definitely biased. You know, they were blasting music in the parking lot outside with a speaker and a bass and a DJ outside, which is definitely inconsiderate, especially considering all of the apartment buildings, you know, Kimball Towers is right there. There's a, just a bunch of people that live right there. So it was outside causing noise, and then inside, he's all glass. It's all glass window. I don't feel like you will have that issue with me because the space is a brick building with no windows, and it's basically a bunker. It's almost like underground. If you enter from the back parking lot, you go down, down a flight of stairs into where I'm going to be having everything. I've also strategically thought about where I'm going to place the speakers, and it's going to be away from, it's going to be facing Worthington Street. So across from Worthington Street is a parking lot that I also own, so there's no buildings. The apartments are really kind of like behind me, over a block away. So to face the speakers towards Worthington Street, the airways are going to be away from the people. Also, I added some extra insulation as well. That way, you know, it's completely noiseproof. But like I said, the difference from Malecone to me, I won't be outside blasting music. And wall was all window, all glass, so I feel like, you know, in an underground bunker, basically, a brick building with no windows, there won't be any issues with noise.
Well, I appreciate what you're saying, but having sat on this board for a significant number of years, one of the biggest concerns when a restaurant slash bar moves into a neighborhood is the noise that's going to happen. Personal experience, I know all about it from where I live. But when a door is open, noise floats out. When customers leave at night, they're very loud, they're laughing, they're clicking their car horns, they're laughing, there's a lot that goes on. So I certainly understand where you're coming from. Yes, some of that may be a little biased from that previous restaurant, and that's certainly understandable when you have numerous complaints coming from residents. And, but it's not unheard of. Let me just say, so you need to be, even though you may not have it emanating from the building itself, as soon as a door opens, there may be noise. So a neighborhood in concern for the quality of life for their residents is going to ask all those questions. I have another thing for you.
Do before.
Go ahead.
Follow up. I honestly, I hope that people are laughing because that means that they're having a good time and enjoying themselves, and that's the whole purpose. It's in the entertainment district in a downtown business zone. That's, that's what the zone is where my space is located, in the entertainment district. So I would just hope that I'm able to exercise the right, you know, of the entertainment license that I paid for to kind of have a responsible, reasonable fun inside the building that's not bothering anybody else outside. If you look around the building, immediately behind me is a parking lot. The left is the fire department. Across the street is a parking lot, and to the left is an empty house. So, you know, I feel like there's not a lot of residents that. So, you know, I feel like there's not a lot of residents that are super close and, you know, we won't be making noise of the whole stuff like that. Because the last thing I want to do is disturb anyone as well. You know, my parents, my parents live in the city and I would want to make sure that they were respected. Um, you know, and they're, you know, they were cared for as well. So one thing I am is, you know, really respectful and I just want to make sure it's fair for everybody.
I I'm not going to debate it with you, but I'm gonna say you may be respectful. It's what your clientele do when you're outside and how well your security handles that situation. But let that go for my other question for you is, I would like to see a floor plan. How many tables, where the bars are, where is the entrance to the back room that's for rental? Uh, again, that also is a necessary part of um what we review when we review these. So I'm trying to provide you with the additional information that helps us make our decision.
Yeah, no problem. I apologize, I can get that over to you. I had an architect, I hired an architect, so um I'll see if he can get the drawings to me in a PDF so that you guys can look at it, okay?
Great, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, for the most part, like I said, if you've been to Lito's, it's it's the same setup, I don't want to change a lot. Um, so if you do, you know, it's kind of like a U shape. Um, but I'll definitely get those drawings over to you. And he also made me a three D uh video kind of like going through, so I can send that too, it's pretty cool.
Okay.
I have um a question, it looks like above the building, there's, is there apartments above Lito's?
Yeah, there's two apartments that are empty. Um, and right now they are not functioning, they're all gutted. Um, and I actually plan to move in above the apartment, so I don't really plan on renting it out. Like I, like I said, I'm the owner currently, so I want to move and be able to be monitoring the spot as much as possible. You know, I want to be there, I want to spend my time there and make sure everything, you know, kind of, I just want to use the space as much as possible, um, you know, for community events and things like that. So I plan to fix up the apartment upstairs and move in and rent like in Springfield.
Okay, yeah, and I agree with uh with Gloria too. You know, I think we we need to see a floor plan, we need to see, you know, an an actual menu, what you're really going to be serving. You know, those are just uh things that, you know, when restaurants are coming in for full liquor license, that that's provided as part of 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 their 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 application. So, um, you know, regarding the the closing time, um, you know, I'm to the board, I mean, I think we just approved one on Main Street Indian Orchard for two AM. So I'm gonna be, you know, consistent with with that vote. I'm not sure however however anyone else is gonna feel um about that. But um, the the searching narcotics weapons, that's a little concerning that that's even brought up. Um, I've been out to to Boston and, you know, about in Springfield and I have never come across that, so.
Yeah.
The fact that it's needed is is it makes me a little weary. I've never been padded down going out in in Boston, bars in Springfield, anything like that, so it's just a little up.
Yeah, I um, when I spoke, when I was preparing for the meeting, they said that security is the main thing, obviously, it's the main thing with me too, because like I said, I'm the owner of the building. So if anything happens, it's like a double whammy for me. Um, so I just want to be thorough. Um, I put that in there just because those are things that younger people do try to bring inside. Um, and I feel like I would feel safe knowing for a fact that nobody has a weapon on them other than, you know, anyone just walking in. So, you know, we do get going to the airport, places like that, and it's supposed to be pretty safe. Um, that was just kind of, you know, to make sure everybody's safe and everybody feels safe.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Do any of the other?
I have to agree with Gloria and Luca, you know, I'm still back to, I go to the bars in Springfield, I live five minutes from downtown and stuff. Depending on who your crowd is, I've not went into that either. I also have some real concerns about your experience. Um, you say you're gonna hire people, but if you don't have the experience, you're the boss, it comes down to you. If you don't have that experience, I have some real concerns about that, you know. And I still feel like there's a lot, well, I want to do this or I hope I could do that, or this is maybe what I'm thinking. I just feel like there's a lot up in the air. I just don't feel confident in what you're giving us. So maybe you need to like find tune in, take a look at what you're doing. If, I mean, knowing your family has them, it's helping, but it's still on your shoulders. So if there's somebody else that's doing it or that's involved or will be managing it, I think that's something we need to know as well.
Okay, yeah, that's definitely a fair concern. Um, but like I said, I do have a lot of support from my family members who have had multiple venues. So, you know, growing up around all of that, it's kind of in my blood. Um, I'm definitely a strong leader, no matter what setting that I'm in. And like I said, I have a lot on the line if anything does go wrong, since I'm the owner of the building and of the business. So I'm definitely focused and motivated on making sure everything runs smoothly and successful um and diverse for all. So, like I said, I do want to use the space and as much as I can for people that want to come and um, you know, use it for, there's not a lot of nice spots in Springfield, um, you know, for halls or stuff like that. Um, but also the things that I was saying that I want to do, those are definitely things, you know, that I'm gonna make happen. So, you know, I wa- um, I do want to include something for seniors because there are a lot in the area that don't have anything to do. Um, you know, maybe they live alone and don't have anyone to cook for them, so they can come grab something, you know. Wednesdays will definitely be their day. I go to Bingo with my grandma all the time and I have fun, so I'm hoping that kids will come, you know, with their parents or grandparents and things like that.
I I you don't need to repeat all that, I'm just saying I don't find it very focused. I feel like it's just very scattered, so um, that's just what just what I'm saying, so.
Yeah, what would you think I should focus into?
No, that's not, that's not our purview.
Yeah, we we can't tell you that.
Present to to us, right?
Well, if it sounds a little um loose, you know, and tighten up the ends, I just want to know where you feel it's loose.
Uh, I think we've presented to several concerns to you that will help you tighten up ends. Right, we have. Also, what is your oh um anticipated opening date?
I'm planning for early November if all goes well.
Okay.
Uh, Gloria, just one last quick thing. Um, the the more I listen to this, you know, thinking about the bar or restaurant. Now, restaurant, like I said, if if that was the main focus, two o'clock, I mean, I don't see too many restaurants open till two o'clock, so it seems like the focus is the bar. And that's fine if that's what it's gonna be. But when you talk about the private parties, one little bit of advice is, I know plenty of places that, especially down in my neighborhood, that it was a restaurant and a bar and then they started renting out the place for private parties. They had groups coming in from Hartford, they had groups coming in from all over the place renting that facility. And that's when you're gonna need security, that's when you're gonna need pat downs, is because soon as that happened, we had more trouble, we've had shootings, we had absolute insanity. So just if that's, you know, one of the things you're gonna be doing, renting out for private parties, just be very careful and make sure your security is top notch when you do that, especially with people that you don't know. Because they, one person comes in nice and quiet to say we'd like to book it for a party, you have no idea the two hundred people they're bringing with them.
Yeah, like I said, that's why the parties are gonna be ending at ten PM. Um, and that's exactly why I had that in my security plan. As you said, there are shootings, if they have someone padding them down, I guarantee you there's no shootings. So I'm kind of getting mixed reviews from everyone on the board. You want to make sure the security is in place really tight, like I had it written, and then other people are saying that it's concerning. So that's for that very reason, that's why I put the security plan like that, because I just want, I want to avoid everything. I I don't want anyone, I don't want any slip ups, I don't want anyone coming, causing a scene or bringing weapons, because unfortunately it does happen, no matter what type of crowd you have, it can definitely happen. So I just want to avoid all of that, not to scare anyone or think, you know, drug addicts and, you know, people that have weapons are coming. Um, I don't think that at all, I just want to make sure that they don't slip through the cracks and get in with any of that.
I think the the concern, and from my perspective, when I um saw your presentation, I immediately went, whoa, you know, what is she expecting to happen? So in your exuberance to present, it needs to be clarified. Pat downs will happen at this hour, um, this will happen at this hour. You have this global security plan that from our standpoint, because we each have years of experience, both on the planning board, as residents, as uh members of neighborhood councils. So been there, done that, seen that kind of thing. Um, you need to to really define down that security plan because that is initially concerning. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, it does, but then I also feel like if I didn't have a security plan, it would be concerning too.
One thing to have a security plan, it's another thing to have a security plan that says we're gonna be padding people down for drugs a- and it makes it seem like if you want to go into that restaurant, you're gonna get padded down. So we will do this after nine PM when most of the dinner clientele have gone. Something like that makes better sense.
Okay, yeah, I have to maybe find soon the presentation, I thought I said, you know, security will be there between nine and two. So that might answer all your questions too, because that was in the presentation, peak hours and weekends, nine PM to two AM. So if you come.
If it's a restaurant, most restaurants, those aren't the peak hours, if it's actually a restaurant.
Yeah, like I said, it's a restaurant and a lounge, so it's it's, I wouldn't say it's a bar, I would say it's a lounge. You can come hang out, have a really cool mixed cocktail, have a nice bite to eat, um, listen to some music and, you know, ha- go on about your night with no issues.
Okay, all right, does anybody else from the board have any other questions?
I guess Rico again, I still say every bar in the country, every bar in Springfield, every restaurant in the city of Springfield should close at midnight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you Rico. Um, as I said, this meeting is being uh continued, we're not voting today. Um, so when you provide the information to Phil, he can pass it on to us and that'll help us review some more information on your endeavor. I will not five minutes before the meeting.
I would agree.
And I will accept a a motion to continue this hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing.
Thank you Leo. Thank you Marty. Phil, would you do roll call?
Voting to continue the hearing, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Dan Yelly?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
And Mr. Please, Ms. Joy are absent. We continue to September first.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your.
Thank you.
So moving on, uh, the next public hearing is an all liquor license, all alcoholic license, location thirteen seventy-three Main Street. Petitioner SC Springfield LLC, doing business as Shaking Crab.
Good afternoon, my name is Mei Hui Hu, I'm the attorney representing the applicant corporation and the proposed manager Ming J, uh Jason, he's also here during the meeting tonight.
All right, if you would both state your name and your address, that would be greatly appreciated.
My name is Mei Hui Hu, my address is at two fifty-one Harbor Street, Street number three, Brooklyn, Mass, zero two four four six.
Uh, my name is Mingji Lee. My address is one seventy Arlington Street, Quincy, Mass, zero two one seven zero.
Okay, thank you very much, and if you could tell us about your project?
So we we're just a a a family restaurant serving um seafood. Um, mainly just boil seafood Cajun style. So it's a, it's more like um family restaurant business type of thing. And then we close, close early, yeah, we'll close a um eleven on the weekends and then ten on the weekdays. And then we don't have a, we don't have a big bar business, we only have, we only do about ten percent of the the legal sales, you know.
Is that um just wine and beer or a full liquor license?
A full legal license, but but we're not a bar, we're we're just a, you know, family restaurant, yeah.
Okay, and who will manage?
Uh, I will be managing, I will be moving down to Springfield and I'll get set up.
And um, there isn't, because it's a commercial, there is no parking?
In business C, you're not required to have off-street parking.
Okay, so where are people gonna park?
Uh, we we have done some research, there's um, there's all parking lot in the back, but uh they say it's gonna be under construction for two years, but there's still plenty of uh street parking for us. Um, and we don't have a big place. Um, and Mei Hui, can you tell them uh what's the capacity for us?
Yeah, the legal capacity, this is, good afternoon, thi- thi- this is used to be the JB's uh bar. Uh, the legal capacity is a hundred thirty-two, but as you can see in our proposed floor plan, we only proposing eighty-eight seats, so that's not a big crowd.
Okay.
Parking, I have to say parking was never an issue when I worked downtown, because I was right across the street from that. People park in the lot, so they park down the streets, you know.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you.
Yeah, it was, it's like Niggs, you know, you park on the street, you grab something or you find a parking lot.
Okay, and is this your actual menu?
Uh, y- y- yes, yeah, is that the one we sent? Yeah.
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 Yeah, so, yeah, we're saying.
Now, you have prices, but maybe I'm not reading. Like if it says jumbo jumbo shaker, double snow crab, double shrimp out?
Yeah.
What does that mean? It it's not on the menu or it's a market price, so you don't have the price?
A ma- uh market price, because seafood price, you know, it goes up and down uh very frequently, yeah.
Yes, definitely, I know that, so, okay. And will you be doing takeout also?
Yes, uh, we will be uh doing takeout and using uh third-party delivery, so we do a lot of, yeah.
Okay, all right. Do any of the other counselors have any other questions?
What, what is your background as far as restaurant management?
Uh, yeah, I've been, I I have been in the restaurant business for um over ten years now. So on, I own a place in Waymouth, Mass, so I I sold it, I sold it um last April, yeah.
So same type of restaurant, a seafood restaurant similar to this or?
Um, it was Asian, Asian cuisine, like.
Okay, but it was a restaurant?
Yeah, a restaurant and bar, yeah, restaurant and bar.
Okay, and you owned it and you ran it?
Yeah.
And all of your workers will be tip certified?
Yes, yeah, if, yeah, that's the requirement to work for us, yeah.
Okay, and how many people will be, um, will you be hiring?
So uh, we are projecting of four to five people in the kitchen and then maybe four or five people in the front, like. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just like this is something moving there.
Yeah.
Hate to see vacant spot on Main Street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, there's, can you just tell us the hours again? Because I'm looking at this and it doesn't seem to agree with what you said in the beginning.
Because I'm looking at this and it doesn't seem to agree with what you said the beginning.
Uh, May Hui, can you, can you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In our application, uh, we stated that it's seven days a week from noon till eleven P M.
Right.
But Ming J. Just Jason just mentioned that there are shorter hours operation during the weekday.
Okay.
On some days close at ten.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, all right. Anybody else? Hearing, Martin, did you, no, okay.
No, no, I'm all sad. I earned the answer.
All right, thank you. Um, having no other uh, questions or concerns raised, I will accept a motion to continue this hearing. Motion to continue. Thank you, Rosemary. Leo. Thank you. Phil, you do roll call?
Voting in favor to continue the meeting, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Danny Lee?
Yes.
This morning?
Yes.
Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
So uh, again, as as the previous, this will be continued until September first.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Phil, if you would do the the next petition as change?
Uh, under public hearing, zone change number three. Three, two, two, three, the address South Side Morris Street, North Side Central Street, North Side Morris Street. Uh, change from industrial A, commercial P to resident C. Um, the petitioner is the Springfield Planning Board. Um, just quickly, um, there are folks here from the uh, from the developer plans to uh, uh, develop the parcel, but just quickly, just kind of a background on the parcel, as as everyone probably knows. These parcels were part of the former Gemini site down in the south end. Um, there used to be a building down there, but unfortunately, a number of years ago had a fire and burned down. The city took these properties for tax title quite a few years ago. Um, did a number of uh, remediation for environmental issues. And it's kind of been holding on to the parcel in order to to see what the right development was. About two to three months ago, when R F P from the city went out requesting proposals for the development of these parcels and uh, uh, a developer was selected. Um, uh, due to the fact that the parcels are currently zoned industrial A, which is, which is really they're probably the only sites in this area of the south end that are industrial A. Um, a zone change because the, because the proposal is to, is to build a townhouse um, residential units, uh, which are not allowed in industrial A or commercial P. Um, they are, they were having the city uh, rezone the properties to residency, which will allow multifamily housing, uh, you know, residency is is a predominant zone down in that area. It's it's directly to the, to the uh, west and also to the south. The development is going to kind of mimic the uh, the development that you see on the south side of Central Street, so. Um, on that note, I will hand it over to the developers. I do have a plan that I can bring up there. Bring that up.
Thank you. And who will be speaking?
I I'd like to introduce myself. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Jasper McCoy. I'm the project manager for the Gemini Project at Home City Development.
Would you tell us your address, please?
So I'm currently at sixty-three Palmer Avenue, Springfield, Mass.
Okay, thank you.
And if everybody can see the screen that Phil is uh, sharing?
Yes.
So currently, we're scheduled for thirty-three town home units and they're going to be offered to first-time home buyers and their single residences. So it's all one owner. We're excited about this because Springfield definitely does need housing and even more affordable housing. But the idea that we're bringing homeownership to the south end is even greater. We have an idea that we're going to bring a community-type pavilion to this area, have it in their inner parking to everything, so it's more secure as well as garages. The entire apartment complex or condo association is going to be well-secured with the outlining of how it's designed on the street. And we're just looking forward to making this happen.
Will they be one or two bedroom?
So each of these are going to be designed as two to three bedroom units with square footage ranging from right now as designed thirteen hundred square feet all the way to sixteen hundred square feet for the three-bedroom units. So these are townhomes with two floors to them, a first and a second, but we will have some accessible units that will all be on one floor. And then some upper units that will all be on the second floor according to the accessible units being below.
All right, will there be garages or is onsite parking open on?
There is both. There's both onsite parking and garages for each unit.
Down Central Street.
Did someone say something?
Leo. I said, but there'll be no parking on Central Street.
There will be none.
Yeah, the parking will be all internal and then on Morris Street. Which is behind.
Yeah, I don't know if you can see my my cursor, but this is Morris Street.
Yes, we can, Phil.
And and this is Central Street.
Okay. So, um, are they, are they pods and condos? Are they all condos? Are they standalone condos and attached condos?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Sure. Are they, are they pods and condos? Are they all condos, some attached, some independent? Standalones?
So they're all attached for the most part. You can see on the plan, there's two complexes or two condos attached on the upper part toward Morris and then on the other side.
Okay.
And then when we get down to Central Street, there are six in a row as designed, and then there's one above that has four units altogether.
And what is the white square?
But those are things that are not within our realm of development. So towards the top of Morris Street, there is a another residential building.
No, no. On your property? Yes. What's that?
That was just designed as paving toward the front of the community center pavilion that we have designed.
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Thank you. And is that green space around it? Is that what that is?
Yeah, we're thinking about keeping that as open space for people to use and enjoy within the community, but also the community of the condo association. We're really focused on keeping this at internal design or complex where people are enjoying it within themselves and given that sense of security.
Uh, this is a question for Phil. Phil, this is a, just for the zone change, correct? So this ultimately would come back before the board for a a site plan review?
Well, I I think it's actually going to trigger a special permit from the city council, but I'd have to double check that, but yeah. This is for the, this is just for the
Just for the zone, the the change to residency.
I do think, I think, you know, their home city is kind of in the early stages of this, so I so this is kind of not, I wouldn't say conceptual plan, but it it is just kind of showing a layout, but that that ultimately may change.
Yeah, I think one, one recommendation I have, um, I'm the civil engineer with the the D P W. I think um, you know, obviously, if if this is kind of the schematic that's going to be moving forward, I would recommend uh, reaching out to the engineering department to to kind of get a you know, an early pre-design meeting set up and uh, I I'm sure the city engineer would like to to see what you have planned and, you know, obviously.
We've actually been in contact with the the city on that, so we have a civil engineer that's already talked to the city and they've sent over uh, schematics as far as what's in the ground already.
Yeah, I was, I was that guy who sent those.
Oh, solid.
Yeah, you're here. I would just, yeah, have have you guys, I would recommend just you know, before you really get into, you know, the the civil engineering aspects, stormwater and stuff like that. I would just, yeah, I recommend just coming in just to sit down for a little bit.
Well, we're looking forward to it.
I just have I have a question as far as you enter it from Morris Street. What's at the other end? Is there another exit? There's an exit there, okay. And what about if you come straight back? Is there an exit to the left?
So we have an architect on and if you'd like to jump in and answer some of these questions as far as the design goes. This is very preliminary, but we've reiterated this.
Gloria, I mean, uh, Rosemary, this is not an exit. There's actually houses here.
Okay.
That may be a turnaround or some, you know, for this kind of turnaround.
Okay, so that doesn't exit somewhere.
Oh, that does not exit.
Okay.
If it, if it helps, Kevin Rothschild Shea, uh, Architecture E L, two sixty-four North Main Street, Islam Meadow, Mass. Good evening, folks. How are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
To to the, to your question and the point, and Phil's correct, uh, you know, the mirror, what Jasper is uh, nicely described. We're working to develop buildings that nicely face on Central and Morris Streets. Uh, but yet create private uh, aisles or opportunities to circulate and navigate and privately park in your driveway or your one-car garage within the toes within the building in your the, uh, and then to the left, um, yeah, that's a turnaround. Um, so basically, we'll be able to manage circulation internally from the end of Morris coming straight through and then connecting out.
Thank you. I must say, I I do like what I see here with all of the landscaping. I know that probably isn't going to be your final landscaping, but I do like the fact that there's a lot of green and trees and all. It gives it more of a uh, friendly instead of a concrete setting. It's a homier look. Yes, thank you.
But we're looking to uh, incorporate some traditional designs that you see in the in the south end of town. Apologize if there's some feedback here. I'm not sure what's coming from.
That's all right.
I know you guys are, I know this is super preliminary, but have you guys done any um, any borings out there? Do you know what the soils are like? I, is there any contamination? I thought that that site had had a past contamination on it. I don't know if you guys know any of that.
Okay, so so two things. One, you know, relative to design, we're looking to get a traditional street, front pocket garden, picket fence, kind of a layered sense of approach to the town or to the to the unit design. And relative to the the site, we are just now with Jasper bringing in final uh, pulling in the design team with all the feed, the civil engineering. Uh, we know this, there's been some environmental work uh, and reports and testing done on sites, so there is a database of information. We know the building has been torn down. We know there's some rubble still there. But next steps will be bringing the team on, getting video tech, getting site surveys and advancing the design beyond this schematic. Um, yeah, so we'll be moving in earnest from this first look, incorporating all the engineering that you're asking about.
Okay.
I don't know if you said, are they, will they individually owned?
Yeah, so these are, these are ownership townhomes, so people who are first-time home buyers will be able to apply for it and it'll be on a lottery system.
And what type of price points? And the idea?
So we're working within the A M I range of seventy percent to a hundred and twenty percent, so it's one hundred percent affordable.
Okay.
All right, if there are no other questions from the board members, I will accept a motion to continue the hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing.
Thank you, Leo. Is there a second? Thank you, Rico. Phil, if you would.
Voting to continue zone change, three, two, two, three, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Minio?
Yes.
Danny Lee?
Yes.
This morning?
Yes.
Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Uh, again, this will be continued to September first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy night. Thank you.
Okay.
The next zone change?
Next zone change, number three, two, two, four. Address, South Side Boston Road, West Side Arnold Street, East Side Gilbert Avenue. Uh, propose uh, residence A, commercial P to business A, petitioner caring for others, health agency LLC.
Good evening. For the record, Sophia Business from R L Beck Associates here, as well with the petitioners. Ladies, would you like to introduce yourselves?
Hi, my name is Althea Haynes and um, I represent the LLC.
And who if, who will be presenting today?
Yeah, so through the chair, if it's okay, I'd like to share my screen.
You should be able to.
Okay, perfect.
I think.
Okay, with any luck, you guys should be able to see the petition. Is that what you guys are seeing?
Yes.
Great, so um, uh, all the application materials have been submitted. Um, I will highlight the plan um, as far as the relief being requested. Um, currently, the applicant owns several parcels um, on along Arnold Street, um, on Gilbert, on August and on Boston Road. The specific seven parcels that they're wishing to change are the ones that are highlighted here in green. They are all currently, there's a combination. Let's see if I can kind of zoom in here. Um, they're ranging from residence A and commercial P, and we're looking to make the zoning a little bit more consistent. Um, here is, hopefully with any luck, you guys can see the G I S for kind of a broader view of the area. Uh, but the area that we're looking to to change is um, these parcels here, these two, these residence A and these three residence A and this commercial parcel here to business A to make it all consistent. Um, to make this entire corner business A. Um, the proposal for the project is that the petitioner is um, planning on putting a community center here. Uh, we have schematically shown the new building, which is approximately eighteen thousand square feet. Um, and will be located somewhere within this vicinity, um, with parking to be kind of spread throughout here. Um, we haven't gone too far into the design, just because we're kind of waiting to see to ensure that the zone change will go through before we start any stormwater um, design and any civil engineering, which our office will also be handling. Um, it's pretty straightforward as as far as my end goes on which parcels they are and the relief being requested. So if there's any questions from the board that either myself or the applicant can answer, we're more than happy to help, so.
Okay, have you spoken with the Pine Point Council?
We have. We actually met with them on July thirteenth and did a full presentation. A member of my office was there as well as the applicants. Um, there was not, all the members were not present, um, so there was a little bit of back and forth and we're still trying to track them down to get a letter um, from them, but I, apparently their meeting was, um, they didn't have a meeting in August. Um, and they're having a meeting in September, so we are trying to secure um, something formal from them, but we did meet and present the materials to them.
With any concerns raised?
Um, Althea, if you would like to share, I wasn't specifically at the meeting.
Um, no, no specific concern. They just asked um, about the building that we were um, closing to build the community center. And we just talked about the center, the program that we're trying to build there. And we gave them background information about our program. So, okay, real concerns.
Now, can you tell us a, please, about what your plans for the community center are?
Okay, so myself and my twin sister, we run is a business called the Center After School Program. We've been running it for over seventeen years, we're licensed um, the Department of Early Education and Care. Uh, we run a before-school, after-school in a summer camp. So right now, we are currently located in the Dunbar Community Center on Oak Street. Um, we have a food license, we have licensed teachers, we also provide our own transportation. So we pick up kids to and from their schools and bring them to the program. Um, we're licensed right now for ninety-five students. Um, so we're just looking to build our So we're just looking to build our own building, have our own space after being in business for seventeen years. Myself and my sister, we have an educational background. We both have um bachelor's degree in um education. Um, we've been working with the youth um in the Mason's Grid community for over seventeen years.
Okay, what will the ages of the um children, well, I, I don't want to say children, the kids coming?
Uh, we run a school age program, so ages five to fourteen.
Five to fourteen, okay. Will anybody be walking to the program or are they all bust?
They're all bust.
All bust, okay, good. I just concerned that that's a, a, a bad corner over there for Boston Road and Arnold. So I'm glad to hear that. Will there be playground equipment?
Yes, um, I will like, um, Sophia said, once we finish on, you know, getting the zoning and stuff, we wanted to build like a little playground outside. And we're gonna build a gymnasium inside of the building also.
Oh, okay. So will they be coming back to us with a, a, a site plan?
Yeah, it's, I mean, because, because technically, just for the board to aware that, you know, that daycare, dial care program is technically allowed in the underlying zone of Residence A. But due to, you know, the, the building restrictions and the size of the building, it, it kind of got complicated trying to construct it. So I think that was the main reason to kind of change the Business A where you're, you know, you're, you're not dealing with a bunch of different zones. Uh, but, but yeah, under, under our zoning, it would trigger a building this size, we would trigger a site plan review from the plan.
Okay, because then, then I don't want to get too into specifics for um they'll be coming back to us. Do any of the other board members have concerns, questions or concerns?
Yeah, I do. Um. It looks, and Sophia, is there any way you could pull up which those are a part of this zone change?
Yep, well then let me share my screen again. And I can actually, I'll do the um, the G I S, which kind of shows them um a little bit better here. Um, so currently it's um these two parcels here that are Residence A.
Yeah.
Um, these three are actually considered one parcel.
Yeah.
And then the Commercial P parcel that is here. This Residence A, this, oops, sorry, it's a little delayed here. Um, and these three Residence A here. So it'd be pretty much the entire corner would become a Business A zoning district.
And what about the two green Residence A uh below Unka Street?
Yep, so these are going to remain Residence A um with possible residential lots. Uh, but the development will not be um expanding onto, onto this area at the time, at this time.
So, so right off the bat, I, I see some pretty uh glaring things that for me give me a lot of concern about the actual site plan moving forward. Um, and it's all, it all has to do with, the site plan itself appears to be occupying a lot of portions of the, the public right of way. Um, so Unka Street, if you're looking at that, even though it's, it's a paper street, um, you know, that's still city property. Um, so having those, you know, it's concerning. It looks like you have catch basins that are right in the middle of it. Uh, bus bases that are that fall within uh public property. And then even more so, if you go over on Gilbert Avenue, um, you have handicap spaces that are pulling out into the public right of way as well.
These, these are no longer, I, this must be an old sketch that we had. Um, I, I believe in Althea, correct me if I'm wrong, we have updated these to remove these parking spaces and they are going to be more reallocated. Um, somewhere in this area to the, to the other part of the building, so this.
Luca, just so you know, I, when, I had met uh, boy, a few months ago now, they, they had come in and shown me it. And, and I did mention that to them, um, that, that, you know, if, if, if Uncas was gonna, you know, if they were gonna discon, they could technically discontinue it. But, but you know, the, the parking backing out on the Gilbert Ave would, would never be approved by the Department of Public Works. So I, I, you know, again.
Yeah, I would, you know, just, just looking at what you guys have on the screen from, uh, you know, an engineering standpoint. You know, I would recommend reaching out to our department to, to talk about this. Um, you know, the discontinuance process for Unka Street, it's possible. You just need to get signatures from your butters and submit a petition to our department. Um, and then you would own up to the center line of the road, but you know, it, the, the, what I'm seeing right now, uh, you know, I wouldn't feel comfortable. Voting in favor of the zone change based on, on what you're presenting before me. There's just too many, too many things that need to be hashed out in terms of how the, the site plan is situated and.
The, the only thing I'm gonna say to that, Luke, is, is in a zone change, you're, you're not, the site plan is not attached to the zone chain. So theoretically, you know, you can, you know, unlike a special permit or a site plan review where they are actually, you know, once you approve the plan, that's the plan they're going with. So for a zone change, we ask that they submit a plan to show what they're proposing to do. But it is not, you know, that plan is not attached to the charge of the zone change. The board is really looking at whether this is.
Yeah, for land use, I, yeah, no, I, I understand. I, I think that it's important for them to know that, you know, they're.
Right, but again.
There's some things on their plan that are gonna have to change.
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't disagree.
And to clarify, just the, the plan that was attached was prepared by the architect. It wasn't prepared by office. So this isn't a, a civil engineering prepared plan. It's just a schematic that the architect came up with as far as situating the building and proposed parking. But this definitely needs a lot more work, just again, to comply with what Phil had requested. Um, he wanted to see where the building was going to be and what the use was going to be. So that's simply schematic at this point.
Thank you. Do any other board member hat, board members have any questions? All right, then I will accept a motion to continue this hearing.
Motion to continue.
Thank you, Rosemary. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, uh, Leo.
So voting to continue the uh zone change three two two four, Mr. Cunningham.
Yes.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Mr. Daniele.
Yes.
Uh, Miss Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Steve Filippo.
Yes.
Mr. Florian.
Yes.
Uh, as with the other ones, this will be continued until September first.
So thank you guys so much. Have a great night.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye bye.
Okay, lastly, your public hearings, uh, a site plan review addressed ten twenty-one Boston Road at all. Um, this is for the construction of a new self-storage facility. The petitioner is Diamond Point LLC.
Yes, hi, uh, hi Phil and board members. My name is Jason Summer. Uh, you might remember me from the previous zoning uh hearings. I reside at forty through ten Ranby Way in Marietta, Georgia, three zero zero six two. Uh, and I wanted to present my, um, my, our project. Uh, the project is ten twenty-one Boston Road is the address. It's the former Car City. That, uh, it is the current Car City, uh, the business that's up there. It's right next to a Walmart and a Sonic store. Uh, we are building a climate-controlled self-storage facility. It'll be a Class A self-storage facility. So it's not what you picture or what you currently have on Boston Road. It doesn't have the orange doors facing the road. It doesn't have the um. I, i- it's a very different, it's primarily an interior facilities. Um, we've been through uh two meetings with the planning board and we appreciated the rezoning from a primarily Business A area to Business B to allow for this use. Uh, we've had two meetings with the city council for the same zoning purpose and successfully went through that. And in August, we've had one meeting with the conservation council. We've met with the pound, the Pine Point Community Council and we have their support in a letter. Uh, we've spoken to every neighbor and every butter. Personally, I have spoken to every neighbor and every butter uh in the area. And to my knowledge, they're all in support of this uh project and um and I have, have, have given me input, which I'll mention in one second. Um, also, we've worked with Phil and the planning staff and we've taken their input into account. Um, the reasons why this, this project will be successful and why it's a good use for Boston Road and for Springfield is that that area is a high-traffic area and uh the type of self-storage we do is a very low immanent use. Um, I can't think of any other use that you would put on that parcel to have less traffic than a climate-controlled self-storage facility. Um, the other reason why the residents seem to like it, it's going to clean up the Car City site. Which is supposedly a very reputable business, but, but, you know, has some old cars and has some litter in the back. And, and the residents have all been nodding their head the right way that they'd like to see that cleaned up. Uh, we're, our facility is going to be quiet. Um, it's going to be clean, professionally managed, it's going to be aesthetically pleasing, and it's going to be professionally landscaped. So we're very proud of what we're putting up there. Um, the community, the community feedback that we've, we've taken into account, and there's, there's been quite a bit. We talked to the re, uh, the neighbors in the back and we talked to the, uh, Phil in the planning office. And they both said we need to keep to residential setbacks, even though technically to the south of us, it's a business zone. We need to keep to the residential setbacks to, to keep the integrity because there are residences back there. So we've done that. Um, we spoke to Phil as well as we've spoken to some of the residents who abut us in the south uh to the rear. And they said, we don't want tall buildings back there. We don't want to look at anything greater than one story. Uh, please give us maximum separation. We've done that. And we changed our whole um schematic and our whole she, our whole uh site plan around to make sure that none of the buildings are within thirty feet of um any residence, any residence at all, and they're one-story buildings. So uh that was agreed upon and, and made the community happy. Um, we're also not encroaching on the wetlands. Uh, that was something obviously important with the conservation committee. And um, we are going to, we are not asking for any variances to uh encroach the wetlands. Um, and then during the uh, the final rezoning, Councilman Gomez uh stood up in, in support of this project, I might say. And he said, please make sure you use local and diverse subcontractors. He said that is very important uh to the community over there. He also said local and diverse people to manage the site. Um, and we made a commitment to him to do that. Um, the office hours are going to be between nine thirty and six P M. Uh, that's when we're going to be open for business and you can come in and, and talk to our manager. Again, it'll be professionally managed. Come in and talk to our manager during those hours. We will have access hours between six A M. and ten P M. After ten P M., no one will be allowed in the facility. Again, we think nothing good happens after that, that hour. And that's it. We, we, we asked the planning committee to approve our site plan. Um, I have Alan Major, who's our civil engineer, and Steinert Architect on the call. I'd like, I'd like Tim from Alan Major to take us through uh, if it's okay with the planning board, of course, to take us through some more details and the, the parts of the uh, the parts of the, the technical details on the project.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Jason. Uh, for the record, Tim Williams and Alan Major Associates, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the planning board. As Phil had mentioned, we just recently had this property rezoned to Business B to allow for this use. Um, this is existing site conditions. Car City sits right here um with its associated fenced-in parking lot, which again, encro, it's a point of note that it, the existing Car City encroaches into the walls of the street right of way, although it's a paper street. Their parking lot and their fencing expands into that uh, into that paper street. As well, there's an abandoned building in back of the site, an associated garage. Um, the, the site itself is roughly two and a half acres. And as Phil had mentioned, we're subject to uh the Wetlands Protection Act because there is uh isolated vegetated wetlands in the back of the site. And per the city ordinance, there's a fifty-foot um no disturbs zone, which we are abiding by. Um, so oh, wrong way, apologize. I'll skip ahead to the site layout. What, again, as what Phil had proposed was a four-story, twenty-two thousand square foot building footprint for a total gross square footage of about eighty-eight thousand square feet. And the two uh single-story storage facilities um are each about forty-eight thousand square feet themselves. Um, we're going to maintain the existing curb cuts out on Boston Road. We're going to pull the existing pavement that's in the middle wall and street out and essentially uh re-vegetate that with uh, with lawn and seed. The traffic circulation will be um essentially one-way through the site with an additional curb cut out on Shumway Street. The site will have full-site lighting and I'll go through that as well as uh robust landscaping. We, we're going through the conservation commission process. We did receive a memo from uh Luca's office today, which we'll address point by point with some comments on the site plans. But essentially, our storm water is being managed completely on-site as well. We're picking up some of the drainage that currently she flows from the abutters lot and, and heads down toward the wetlands and we're going to pick that up and catch basins on our site. So their drainage does not impact our development more pond and stormwater on their site. Um, we're going to treat that with an irrigation system, water quality inlets to treat for both quantity and quality of the stormwater exiting the site. Uh, the utilities, we are going to add a fire hydrant in the back off Shumway Street. We are going to add a fire hydrant in front of the building off of Boston Road. We are going to need two new waterline services into Boston Road as well as new gas service. And currently, the reason why this section of the site is not being landscaped from the abutter is because there's a sewer easement there and we will be tying our proposed sewer into that existing sewer lateral that eventually runs out to Shumway Street. Um, we've prepared a full-site lighting plan that shows no light spillage off of the site. These will be fully hooded uh, uh, lights as well as wall packs on the building. And the photometrics plan indicate that there'll be no light spillage off of this parcel into abutting parcels. And again, our landscaping plan where we really try and provide a very vegetated buffer between us and the abutters to the south of us. Um, we've uh proposed to uh plant seven seven uh eastern red cedars along the back and a number of other plants along Shumway Street and at the front door of the uh, the curb cuts off of Boston Road. So that's really the layout in a nutshell. Um, it's, we presented this, our uh, we presented this during the uh, the rezoning. Not a lot has changed over that concept plan that was presented at the time. We'll have a, a total of, I believe it's twelve parking spots with three of them being handicapped. Um, again, there's not a lot of traffic that's proposed to be introduced into this site. It's uh, it's low, low traffic volume. And we think it's a real uh asset to the neighborhood. Uh, again, it's, it's adjacent to the uh, the Sonic and the, and the Walmart and it, we think it fits in with the neighborhood really well. So with that, um, I, I'm available to answer any questions you guys may have on the site design.
Do any of the counselors have any questions?
I, I just have one question and um, you know, on behalf of D P W, we did a, you know, put a, an extensive review together. You know, the, the site plan was really well put together. Um, so there was not a lot of issues from the D P W standpoint in terms of how the, the site's designed uh from an, an, uh, an engineering aspect. Um, the one question I do have is, I know that this is a, a revision of the original site plan and um, there was formerly a dumpster on site and it looks like that has disappeared. Do you guys see yourselves having any issues with trash and that won't be available for people to use or?
Um, what we do is, uh, this, this Jason, uh, what we do and we've done to other facilities is with our outdoor units in the back, we'll have a rolling dumpster that we allow our, again, we don't want any dumping in there, but we allow our customers to use. And then during trash day, we take it out to be, to be serviced. But no, there won't be a, there will not be a dumpster or outdoor dumpster or dumpster enclosure on top. This seems to, seems to work best for every, everyone. What we don't want is people randomly dumping uh, you know, uh, materials.
Yeah, they're all, they're all storage.
The whole storage or even people who don't live in the neighborhood, quite honestly, who aren't customers of ours, getting in there and trying to, trying to put things on top of next to the dumpster. So what we found is it's best if you put into a unit, you allow, you regulate who can dump their, their, you know, their trash in there and then you pull it out. And and the other reason, we had a dumpster enclosure, but it was, it was on the paper route. And after talks with the city, we realized that's, we're not, I don't want to go through that process and we're certainly better.
So you're saying the dumpster is going to be in in like inside one of the units and you'll take that out as needed kind of thing?
Well, it'll be under lock and key. We'll allow our customers to come in and use it. And then during during dumpster pickup day, we'll roll it out. It'll be on wheels.
Gotcha.
And we do this in other facilities as well.
Hi, it's Rosemary, just one question. And and I don't think it looks like it's an issue, but I know it's only open till ten. But is there any issue with car headlights going in towards any residences or as they're driving in or out up till ten o'clock?
There, there shouldn't be, and there's going to be screening, there's going to be a fence, and there's also going to be landscape screening towards the back, so it shouldn't be a problem. Really, most of our usage, most of the square feet is going to be managed on those five spaces or six spaces towards the north on Boston Road. Really, there's going to be a very small percentage of the people who are actually going to travel through the facility out to out to Shumway.
All right, if there are no other questions or concerns, Phil, do we vote? No, yeah, do we vote?
You're going to continue this.
Okay. All right, so I will accept a motion to continue the hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing.
Thank you, Luca. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. One now.
Voting and favor to continue the site plan review, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Dannyelli?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Filippo?
Yes.
And Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Okay, again, like the rest, this will be, this will be back before the board on September first.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.